We have a forum. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th into the 3rd? So moved.
Second.
Any seconds?
Julia Beckman.
There was Terry.
Well, I apologize.
Terry Pavicich.
Thank you. Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka?
Aye. You forgot me.
Motion carries. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on something we're voting on tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendents.
We approved minutes?
Yes.
We did.
Sorry. Okay, there's gonna be a, there will be a special report tonight, not on the agenda. This is the approximately 200th board meeting that I have presided over as a superintendent. And to honor this occasion, I prepared a special board packet for the board, and I would like to review those items publicly. I know this is not on the agenda, as I said, but that's okay. I'm in charge right now, and it's too late to fire me.
It's getting dangerous.
Hold on, Colleen, go back. Go back.
Oh, okay.
See? Timing is everything. Over the past year or so, I've done a lot of talking to retired superintendents, and when I ask them, what is the one thing you do not miss, the term "board meetings" comes up a lot.
Excuse me?
So a little more than a year ago, I began the process of counting down the board meetings for the remainder of my career. Okay, Colleen, we're good. So here is the chart. I know this board likes color charts, so it's in color. A replica of the one that's on my bulletin board, except for the hole where the "tack" goes. And you will see that the June 20th is the last one unmarked on the list. So we've provided for each board member a yellow marker, so that at the end of tonight, you can share my accomplishment of crossing off the final board meeting in District 99.
What's the starboard?
I have no idea. Not yet, Colleen, not yet. Now, perhaps my least favorite item on the agenda every month was the parking lot. I think it should have been renamed to something like, quote, "List of all the things Mark McDonald does not want to do, has not done yet, or just forgot," end quote. In fact, I counsel new superintendents in other districts to discourage at all costs their boards from developing something like a parking lot. Okay, Colleen.
So.
Yeah, we're coming, Rick, we're a little short.
Now, this is?
The reality is, the parking lot is no longer relevant to me, only to Hank. And so here's the latest version of the parking lot, which is now, as it says, Hank's Parking Lot. And for Hank's additional enjoyment, we have added some parking lot items for him, so he can start with a full agenda. We've all seen the recent media coverage about community college presidents and former school board superintendents blatantly abusing the public's trust by spending public dollars inappropriately. Wine at the campus restaurant, large stuffed animals, a dog training center. I've been asked many times, quote, "Can such a thing ever happen in District 99? Did you purchase a large stuffed animal, Dr. McDonald, without the board's knowledge?" Which I replied, heck no. Our board had a fit a few years ago, an administrator had a lunch meeting at Teddy's Red Hots, and used his peacock to purchase hot dogs, and it never happened again. So in honor of outstanding fiscal scrutiny on being part of the District 99 Board of Education, each board member will receive in their packets a $5 gift certificate for Teddy's Red Hots.
No, no.
Not paid by a P.
Let's all go there after the meeting.
I'm sure Teddy can use the business.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Not yet, Colleen. Finally. Okay, go ahead, Colleen.
Oh, don't we look wonderful.
We're a little, we're a little, not so tight on the...
Picture.
Oh, for crying out loud. Picture's gotta be there someplace.
I believe I speak for the entire board when I say...
All right, well, let's see, let's see, we have a copy of the picture.
Oh, we're stunning, right, right on the mound.
There you go.
There we are.
There you go.
There we are.
So here we have a picture of eight smiling people at graduation. The one on the far right is smiling because he now knows there are only four weeks left. The seven people on the left are smiling because they also know there are only four weeks left. We'll keep that picture up there, Colleen. So this concludes the irreverent, slightly insubordinate part of the agenda, and now for a more serious heartfelt part. Thirteen years ago, I left the job of deputy superintendent in the West Aurora School District to join District 99 as principal at South High. I was highly thought of in Aurora, and was made known to me by many people that I would be the next superintendent if I chose to stay. The problem was, that is not what I wanted to do. I wanted to go back to working with students and teachers at an elite public high school and school district, and then one of my youngest son, who is a product of gifted programs, to attend an elite high school with the prerequisite academic options that would allow him to pursue his dreams. And as it turned out, I chose wisely, because District 99 more than met my expectations in all facets. I was privileged to work with Dr. Dave Evelyn, an educator I respected and admired for five years. When he announced his retirement, I decided that perhaps I could do the job as well as anybody else. I knew that District 99 had rarely selected a superintendent from within, but I was fortunate to be there at the right place and the right time. This community has been good to my family and me, enabled my ex-wife and me to send our sons to the colleges they choose to attend, they chose to attend, versus the ones we could afford. I've had the pleasure of being associated with many exceptional students during my tenure here, many I expect to hear from or about for many years to come. Been the colleague to many exceptional educators, in fact, I found outstanding educators in every department, every building, and every role in this district. I consider many of those persons to be the best I worked with over my 38 years in this career, and several among the best in our profession, so what an honor for me to be part of them. In this work, I've met with state and national political leaders. My grandchildren will have a picture of me shaking hands, or two pictures of me shaking hands with governors of the state of Illinois. I've also met U.S. senators, members of Congress, leaders of the state legislature, mayors, key policymakers, and others. Not so bad for a boy from a 900 square foot tract house in a veteran subdivision in Streamwood, Illinois. There are two people on the board I worked with through my entire tenure as superintendent, Mrs. Beckman, Mrs. Pavicich. In addition to the five members who joined the board during my administration, I work with six additional individuals no longer on the board, and thank you to the two of them who came tonight, the two of them who came tonight. In candor, I can say there was no board member with whom I was in agreement 100 percent of the time, but many I was in agreement with most of the time, and a few I was seldom in agreement with, but that said, our disagreements were largely respectful. We engage in honest and open public discourse in which we shared our opinions candidly, but listened to the alternative positions of others. And as we know, respectful disagreement, differences of opinion and philosophy, and question to understand are part of the democratic process and lead to better outcomes for students, parents, staff members, and taxpayers. I think we usually accomplish that goal. Now, I would make, I would make the point that if we disagreed, it was about direction, process, how much to ask the communities to support, how much or for whom should pay for the service or program. To the credit of this board and those I worked with previously, what was best for students was always a top priority and not something else. And this board was very willing to take unpopular positions in defense of what it considered to be best for students. I know not every community is served as well by its Board of Education, and thus, it has been an honor for me to serve the men and women who sat in these chairs during the past eight years. I am familiar with the phrase, "Some of us are show horses and some of us are plowhorses." My perception is many superintendents of school districts like District 99 are show horses, whereas I, still the offensive lineman of my youth, was more of a plowhorse. This community seemed not to care, or to care only that the job got done, style points did not count so much here, for that I am grateful, because I was allowed to be myself. So in closing, I want to thank the Board of Education and the community for giving me this opportunity, sticking with me for the past eight years, is very much appreciated. And now, I along with you, look forward to Dr. Thile's leadership for the future of a great school district. Thank you. Please. Now for student cafeteria music.
Where was this humor all along, Doug?
I was expecting to see this come up during their presentation.
Want me to just jump right into it here? I think, this is just an informational item. We had a good first meeting, a couple of meetings with Chartwells. They have approached our cafeteria staff and offered every one of them a job if they want it, and so they have the opportunity to come over to Chartwells. It's a very organized, very big company, but we do have some local individuals that are, I think, are gonna do a good job here. The contract was higher in cost, obviously, than the lower one that Quest had been under for the last two years, but we were still feeling pressure and are being pressured by the State Board of Education, and because we're a part of the National School Lunch Program, to make sure that our full-price lunches, at least, are as much as we're getting reimbursed from federal program. The theory is that if you're only charging $2 for a lunch locally of the full-price kids, and you're getting $3 back on the reimbursement, that you're subsidizing the reimbursement, basically, or using the reimbursement to subsidize your program. So they want your lunch prices to be at least what they're getting reimbursed for, and so, but they're not making us do it all at one time, and we're gonna make a move here, we proposed to make a move to $3. Our current rate is $2.65, and ISB is saying we have to raise it to at least $2.75, and we're gonna go to $3. And so, the top section here, I just did a handful of local, our feeders, our biggest feeders, and then just a couple other high schools that are around us, so you can see, we fit pretty nicely into what everybody's doing. And if you look at the top one, Darian 61, one of the feeders, and Woodrow 68, they already have lunch prices that are higher than ours, and those are smaller lunches for, you know, elementary students. So $3, we think, is a very good place to go to. We'll probably move this up to $3.25 next year, unless we feel it'll really hurt the program. And the breakfast price, we're at $1.25 now, but the program is not that strong, and so, looking at where other schools are at, we could probably push it higher, but we don't want, we want, we want this program to grow. And actually, it's something that Chartwells feels strong, and Quest did too, that a lot of kids come to school, and they don't, if they don't have a good breakfast in them, they just aren't gonna make it even to lunch and be with it. And so, we're gonna try and do as much as we can to get the kids into the cafeteria in the morning when they get here, and maybe we'll get that program to spark a little bit. So this was just an informational item, to let you know, in case you hear from somebody, well, you know, how did it go from $2.65 to $3? It's a big jump. Well, part of it was a contract, but it's also being pushed by ISB, and third, it really is a pretty reasonable price compared to other schools that we have in the area, so it's pretty reasonable. That was, that was the point.
Question? Plan on summary? Title on plan summary?
Ms. Carty?
Okay. So, our last Title I plan was actually written in October of 2012. At that point, there was, to our understanding, some restructuring of the state in terms of how the plans were reviewed. In fact, we had school improvement plans the preceding year, the year before, and they were hanging out there for a long time, not approved. So Dr. Minor, my predecessor, contacted ISB to let them know that it was not approved, and the plan was never approved. It was never reviewed, as to what I understand. So our last Title I plan that was approved, that was reviewed and approved, was in 2008, June of 2008. There isn't a cycle for Title I plans. In the past, with district improvement plans and school improvement plans, there was a cycle. For example, every other year, where you had to submit a plan. There isn't a cycle for Title I plans, and there's actually been a lot of changes to the Title I and CLB grant. So it's obviously time for us, even if our 2012 plan had been approved, it's time for us to review and write a new plan. The way in which school improvement plans, district improvement plans, and Title I plans are written, and again, because of the waiver that Illinois received, school improvement plans and district improvement plans are no longer required in the state law. However, Title I, which is federal funding, Title I plans are still required. You use the same system. It's called Rising Star. I am quite familiar, as is Pete, as we've written many school and district improvement plans through that, that program. The way it essentially works is there are a number of indicators, different indicators for school improvement plans, district improvement plans, and Title I plans. You assess the indicators. They're in different categories. For example, for Title I plans, there's district vision and direction, district and school improvement processes, district allocation of resources for school improvement, and district support for school improvement and student achievement. So there are 11 Title I indicators that we assessed. When you assess an indicator, there are, there's guidance, they're called "wise ways", that's research-based, and you basically look at those research-based strategies, and you assess your program. To do that, I gathered a small committee of teachers who are either in the process of working on an administrative degree, or have recently received one. It was a nice, small team. I had representation from, for example, English, world language, avid, fine arts, pretty nice, nice group, and we met four times to assess the indicators and to determine the level in which we were implemented. There's three levels: no implementation at all, partially implemented, or fully implemented. After that, I created this chart, because I wanted to narrow it down, instead of the 21 pages that are quite confusing when you look in the Rising Star, because any previously entered information or data remains. So it's a slew of just writing that you see. And if, for example, in a previous plan, you've identified something as fully implemented or partially, you cannot necessarily change it. If there's been data entered, unless you had fully implemented originally, if it was partially or not implemented at all, you can't change it. And some of the same indicators for one apply for the other. So I created this chart to try and make it easier for you to understand the indicators, and I shared that with our executive council, which is the building, administration, both buildings, and then district administration as well, to get their input. So teachers had input, and administration had input. And we basically went through the indicators, which are on the left. You can see that some of the indicators no longer apply due to changes in Illinois. Many of them that do apply focus on parent involvement, which is a requirement of NCLB, quite a few changes, even from when we submitted our 2012 plan. For example, we have an African-American liaison working on both ends of town. We have a Spanish-speaking homeschool liaison working at North High School. We've had a bilingual coordinator at South for years, but as a result of a grant we just received this year, we have a Spanish-speaking individual at North High as well. Many of the indicators focus on assessment, and how you use that assessment data. Also talks about targeted assistance. So in other words, how are we determining which students to serve with Title I funds, and what are the ways in which we're spending those dollars? In other words, what interventions are we putting in place for those Title I eligible students? And then, the last indicator on this first sheet, is how we're using Title I funds to support after-school, before-school, or summer programs. The final indicators on the second side basically deal with highly qualified, which is a requirement under NCLB, really not an issue in District 99. You'll notice I even referenced board policies in some of the explanation. We have a board policy whereby we do not hire teachers or parent professionals that are not highly qualified, as well as the indicators we use to determine our students are being successful. The other part of this is really about how we coordinate services that are done here in-house with individuals that are in institutions, for example, neglected students or homeless students, how we work with those outside agencies. And actually, I was able to work closely with Scott Lougazza in sharing some of that information as well, and determining exactly how the alignment works. And then the last couple of indicators focus on targeted assistance programs, which District 99 is a targeted assistance program. In other words, there's two types of Title I programs. There's targeted assistance, and there's school-wide. We are targeted assistance, which means we have to allocate groups of students that meet criteria. In order to be school-wide, we would have to have a 40% or higher free reduced lunch population, which we obviously do not. And then the final one relates to Title II, but all part of the NCLB application, and then is the professional development that we provide for teachers, and how we use Title I funds to support that. So, the indicators and the evidence that we need to provide when we assess those indicators, you know, there's a brief summary there, it narrowed down about 21 pages into two pages. From here, the board will vote on whether or not to accept this plan. It may seem a little bit odd, in the sense of, where's the plan part of that? Right? We've assessed the indicators, we've provided evidence, where's the plan? You don't really write a traditional plan when you write a Title I plan, because every year when you submit the NCLB application, which is our Title I, Title II, you write goals. And in addition to that, you write how you're going to assess those goals, how you're gonna know if you've met those goals. So that plan is almost entwined annually into the application. And so, for this part, we assess the indicators, we provide evidence, and then each year, we build into our application what our goals are, and how we'll assess whether or not we've met those goals. So that's, so you'll vote on it, the plan will be reviewed, and then we'll build those goals and assessments into our application.
Any questions? Any questions?
It's really an impressive plan. I love all the things that we do to capture every student, no matter where they are on the spectrum. And is there ever a chance that we wouldn't be approved for Title I funding? Are you ever worried about that?
There are some concerns right now in the state budget.
Oh, that, oh, that's right.
Because we are waiting for our type, normally, we'd have our Title I allocation by now, and I would be working on the application, but due to some issues at the state, those federal flow-through funds are at risk.
Yeah.
So...
Even though they're federal funds.
Yes, so answer typically, that's not a concern, but right now, I can't even work on the application until we get an allocation.
Got it.
Other questions?
It's a great plan.
Thank you, Jim, great work. Freedom of information request?
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. The district received two freedom of information requests in the past month, and both of those were fulfilled in a letter from Mark Stalen.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item, any member of the board would like to talk about further? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Stale?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Terry. Second? Thank you, Julia.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Motion carries moving on to recommendations for action, or bid for sousaphones.
Is this you, Mark, or Jim?
It's me.
Both worked on it.
We did, actually. Just, this is just, again, action item, but it's to approve the purchase of 10 sousaphones. Back in 2013, Brer and Glenn were looking forward, and I think we had some purchases that year that they brought to the administration that we were like, well, out of luck field a little bit, you know, we were like, okay, we hadn't seen a large purchase like this in a while, or, I had never seen one, actually, and so, we did a little bit of homework and found that the money had been paid for the last time they did a large purchase out of fine arts department budgets. And so, we sat down and talked about it, and agreed that if they could lay out what the, what a 10-year cycle would be for some different groups of instruments, it would be helpful to the assistant, associate principals that help allocate those dollars to them, so they would know that something big is coming. And so they did a great job, really. And so, we know, you know, for the next several years, what their plans are. Next year, South is planning a similar purchase for sousaphones, so we should see a similar setup. The cost for these has dropped, actually, fairly nicely, I guess. It was originally thought that the price would be about $8,000, and it was in the, you know, $6,000 range, so it's, it'll, won't be quite the shock to the budget that at North, Ken Sorenson was planning on, so that's a good thing for him. So, because it's over the $25,000 threshold, anyways, we still do a public bid, and very tight. I think it was $10 a sousaphone difference, overall. Actually, it was $56,950 was the second lowest bid, $56,910, so $40 different for this. And what we'll do is, we get approval tonight, if it's okay, we'll issue a purchase order tomorrow, and we should be able to have them delivered by August 1st, and that's also when they're gonna have their new uniforms, hopefully by then, so we're keeping touch on that. Everything seems to be okay on the uniform production, but it's still, you know, a month or so off, so...
They get to see pictures, right? They're gonna feel like...
So, we would recommend that you approve the, a little bid of music and arts, which is $56,910.
I will move that we approve the recommended bid to purchase 10 sousaphones from...
Music and arts.
Sorry, I can't read, it's too small. For the total amount of $56,910, with my comment that I have a question, will we be selling the old ones? Doug should have called earlier, I don't know what happens to that.
You know, sometimes he'll keep them as spares, and, you know, a lot of times, they are all pretty bent up, and that is...
They get a lot of wear, I will say.
Yeah. And actually, so we haven't, we don't have a plan for...
I just wondered, I was just curious.
At least, I don't know.
I do move for the purchase at the recommended level.
Second.
Mike, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Motion carries moving on to copy paper.
This is Jim.
It is, and I will not be grabbing my old sousaphones.
Thank you.
I'd love to see that, actually.
Okay, annually, we bid up copied paper, we put the documents together and sent to 18 suppliers, so a big group.
Pre-take two.
Expanded throughout the years. Six vendors came back with proposals. It's recycled paper, we do that every year now. Cost of white paper, a little lower this year, cost of colored paper, about the same. I went back the last two years to, and I wanted to look forward now, in 2016, '17,
Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Motion carries moving on to copy paper.
This is Jim.
It is, and I will not be grabbing my old sousaphones.
Thank you.
I'd love to see that, actually.
Okay, annually, we bid on copied paper. We put the documents together and sent to 18 suppliers, so a big group.
Pretty tight, too.
Expanded throughout the years. Six vendors came back with proposals. It's recycled paper, we do that every year now. Cost of white paper, a little lower this year. Cost of colored paper, about the same. Went back the last two years to, and I wanted to look forward now, in 2016, '17, which we're in right now, compared to 2016, down about $20,000.
Wow. Fabulous.
Down roughly 500 boxes. That's a lot, because each box has 5,000 sheets. So if you're doing your math, that's a lot of paper. So the district's doing real well with considering copying and acknowledge that. So we're down a lot of funds this year, so that's very good. No early ASC last year, 100 boxes, this year 50. So 50%.
Good job.
Great work.
No more paper airplane.
No bid came in with Paper 101, the one bid in previous year. We're familiar with that company and their product, so we are asking Board of Education to award to Paper 101 for $54,654.58.
I'll move that we award a contract to Paper 101 for a copy of paper for fiscal year 2016, '17 in the amount of $54,654.58.
I'll second it. Very good. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Moving on to the approval of the Title I plan?
I move to approve the Title I plan as presented.
Second.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Thank you. These agreement for the new Chromebooks?
Yeah, let me take that part. We have our first experience with, I guess, two-year life of some of the Chromebooks that we have. If you were able to follow the memo, I always try and keep it on one page if I can, so I kind of jammed a lot of stuff in there, I apologize. But the, in 2014, we bought 1,400 Chromebooks. There was a second year of our pilot. And the first year of the pilot, the preceding year, was really just to kind of settle on what kind of Chromebook to get. And they all liked this particular model, that's what we, and so we, the second year of the pilot, we just, we didn't use another selection of different types of machines. We bought the C720. And I think so far, they've enjoyed it, and programmatically, it's been very functional and working for them. So the first year of use for this, this group of Chromebooks was, was the pilot. Last year was the second year of the use for those, and it was, they were given to the seniors with the thinking that we would be able to collect those, have some minor changes. This is one option, we didn't know exactly where we're getting into. It's, we, it's, we're kind of going year by year with, and learning, learning a lot of different things and learning what systems we have to have in place, as a matter of fact, but in order to maintain these. But we thought we'd get more back in ready-to-go shape. And at the first blush, we just got them right before graduation, so it's all just happening this month. Only about half came back where they could just put them in the stack and say, yeah, we're 99% sure that's going to function okay. It looked good, and they did a check where they turned it on and it seemed to function fine. So there's another half that had some degree of issues with it. And when, some were really, obviously, had cracked screens, had cracked cases, and that might account for half of that half, or maybe 25% of them. And then there's the other 25% had just some questions about them, they hadn't had time to go through them, but they think there's going to be some repairs needed for those. So we got to the point of, okay, we need to have machines in place for next year. Can we cover the entire grade? And we pretty understood, quickly understood, we weren't going to be able to cover the entire incoming freshman class with these units. Now, it's possible if we had time and put more money into them with repairing cracked screens and things like that, we could. So we had a long discussion about, do we just outfit maybe one of the, one of the schools with these C720s? Or do we, and buy new for one of the other, the other school? Or do we just go and buy the entire class, the, a new Chromebook? And because we don't know exactly how many we're going to get out of each C20, 720, we thought it would be better to err on the side of being safe, get the freshman class a new set of machines. And then with the other three grades that had a brand-new Chromebook this first year, let's see what we get out of those in terms of damage and also just the overall life. One of the concerns with this model so far is the battery life going beyond the two, second or third year. So we're not even sure we're going to get three years out of it. Now, we, the machines may hold up, but the battery life is getting shorter. And so we're, and it's not an easy battery to repair. You have to pull the whole machine apart to get at it. It's not a plug-in type battery, so. But one of the issues that we like about the replacement models is that they, as far as a cracked screen and the durability, they've reinforced the machines differently. They are much stronger, so we think they're going to hold up better. But just because it's such an important program to the district and we want, we made modifications of budget, we actually, Jim and I talked, and some of the projects for this next year for Capital Project list have come in under budget. So rather than going back into the list of things for capital projects and putting more of those items on the list, we're, we're going to allocate some of the dollars there for the new Chromebooks. And still going to recommend leasing it over a three-year period of time, just because I think we can do it on a budget level if we find that this new set of Chromebooks that we buy for the class coming in does hold up for four years, and we would probably just spread it over four years going forward. But we're still learning. And so we are, we've got a great tech team, they're doing a lot of hard work trying to keep these things going. And in terms of program, it's been very successful, at least, they've been able to provide backup machines and things like that when they need it. So we'll have a very large group, possibly 800 machines, maybe 900 if they, we make some other repairs, that will be able to be used as backup machines for the next three years for the machines that we started up last year. So that's kind of how we're airing right now. Rather than spreading it thin, we're going to leave it until we learn exactly how much life we get out of these machines. So I recommend that we, you give us authority to expand the lease. The lease we have with Wind Trust Bank is, they use a master lease system, so they don't have to review our credit, they don't have to go back through the whole review process. We talked about interest, the interest rate, the current rate for leases about 1.8. This one's going to be a little bit more just under 1.9, still, still very reasonable lease rates for us and the cost. We're actually going to make, stage the first payment to be due in August of 2017, so it'll only be for a short period of time that we even borrow that money, because we'll be in the new budget year and we'll have the dollars up front to pay for it. So we're really going to minimize the interest costs on this. So on the high side, we're thinking it might be $142,000 a year, but it may be a little bit less than that. But we'd like to just expand it, go ahead and get the new class coming in, a whole set. And ultimately, that's the really the way, the best way to do it, to give the entire class a Chromebook. Some of the concern about the short-lived, short lives for some of these machines is that the seniors knew they weren't going to have to have them for the duration, the pilot group knew they weren't going to have them for the duration. And so we're thinking there might have been some of that where they weren't treated as perfectly as they could have been. And so, and we're learning that a lot of the seniors will walk around with a cracked screen until the last day of school and turn it in. So we're not even finding out about all the, you know, the repairs. So we may change how we do that in terms of just trying to do a check of the machines earlier, so we know, kind of know what kind of condition the machines are coming in. There's a lot of things we're learning. So that's my recommendation, and we think it's the best, best plan at this point.
So were the bulk of them cracked screens, or were there actually a lot of non-functional?
Well, keys off and things like that were just, this is a whole other layer of things. They did a pretty quick review of them, and so there's some they just set aside. There were, I don't, I wouldn't say the bulk of them are cracked screens, but there's a good number of cracked screens. And at this point, we might not even repair those and just use those machines for keys and other, just scavenge off of those, because it's $150, $140 still to replace a cracked screen. And a two-year-old machine, you may not want to put that into it. And so we're thinking that there's, I wouldn't say it's 25% of them were cracked screens, but there's a good number, we probably will have a count for it.
It becomes our warehouse of parts now.
Yeah, actually, that's what they've been doing with some of these, is a machine, somebody does crack a screen, sometimes they were just, you know, they call it Frankenstein the machines, so they're using different parts from different ones and...
One of the things that, thank you for great presentation, answered almost all my questions in your presentation. I was wondering with, what some of the students were doing, though, obviously walking around with some cracked screens, but some of them had machines that weren't working right and didn't ever bother to bring them in, and I wonder...
Well, they might be functioning, but not, not a machine you would give a new kid coming in when everybody else gets a new one. So they didn't want to give, you know, they wouldn't need to be repaired to get everybody feeling that they're going to take care of this machine for a couple of years. And the newer machines are, again, much sturdier. The tech department's convinced that they're, they're going to hold up a little bit better in terms of the repairs that we've been having to make.
So the incoming seniors will have their Chromebooks for their second year?
Incoming freshmen or incoming senior?
Next year seniors.
Oh, next year seniors. Right, that'll be their, that'll be their second year, correct.
And so are we going to have the same problem next year?
I think we're going to, the plan right now is to keep buying the freshman class a new set of machines and keep, keep using these machines as just spares and actually just using the parts to get the next class an entire set. So the, next year, they have the, will only have, will have three classes using those machines again. Incoming seniors already have a machine, they, they're keeping their machines. All of the, all of the freshmen through junior classes this year kept their machines for the summer, and they're going to keep that machine for next year, so they'll have two years.
And then we'll find out how they're going to last.
Right. And the expectation is if we see the same kind of repair rate, that we'll just keep using the good machines and keep building them and then, and keep using them as spares. So at this point, we're basically going to say we're going to just try to keep buying the freshman class a new group, a new machine, and get into this newer, better machine that's a little sturdier.
Well, it'd be nice, too, if we get to a point where they're actually lasting the four years, then that could mean a lower rate for our families. For the renting. For the renting, because this was all built on a three-year deal.
Three years, right.
So hopefully, we'll get there.
Yep. And then I think by, you know, by two or three years down the road, I imagine these machines are going to be even...
More durable.
Yeah, titanium by that point.
And the battery life does keep getting better. You know... They keep getting better and better with the batteries.
And that's the big thing, actually. The biggest concern is the battery life on these, so.
Another question. I'll, I'll move that we approve the modification of the existing master lease with Wind Trust LLC by adding 1,335 new Acer C738 Chromebooks to the lease and authorize the administration to sign and execute all necessary documents related to this lease modification.
Second.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to due business, the policy committee.
Policy committee met, yes. Yeah, well, we're, well, we're come to basically once a quarter now, is kind of the idea, because we're no longer going through, remember, the whole, the whole list of policies and trying to get them all up to date. Now, it's just a matter of maintaining what we have. So we have quite a few here. This is the first reading. There's a very good description in your packet that Dr. McDonald put together for us. If you want, I can go through them, or just invite your, your comments and questions and what have you.
When would you need questions or comments by?
Well, before the next, before our next meeting, where we would approve on the second...
So before the next business meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything anyone want to talk about?
Nothing, nothing earth-shattering. There's nothing super... There's some things in here, but, but, but most of it is alignment issues, alignments with newer legislation, alignment with the press recommendations from School Board Association, so just let us know.
Okay. Before we move on to the second reception of visitors, we're going to have another unscheduled.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, what a surprise.
Where's the pig?
Over there. I'm showing up five days.
Where's the balloons?
The balloons, too.
Yeah, good for you.
So we thought I had a couple people who want to say a few things, and I'm going to start.
Okay.
Mark, since this is your last board meeting, we wanted to take a moment to express our appreciation. I do, I know you did not want any form of recognition, but we could not let the last board meeting you attended, 99, as superintendent, because I know you'll come here out of...
Yeah.
Obviously, some old...
Public comments.
As superintendent, pass without a few words of gratitude.
I don't have to give my address, I can just...
There you go. I lost my place. A few words of gratitude and recognition. I would like, I would just like to recognize, once again, your contribution to the education of thousands of young people in the district, state, and even the nation. As a community member and parent of students in the district, I say thank you from the bottom of my heart. As a board member, it's been an honor and privilege to work with you. I wish you only the best in this new phase of your career.
Thank you.
This is... Anybody else want to say something? I'll go last. Oh, you want to go last? Okay.
I have some short remarks prepared. I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. McDonald for his entire tenure, as he pointed out earlier, at District 99, as well as Terry Pavisic. First as South High principal, and for the past eight years as our superintendent. I had the honor of being board president when he was hired as our superintendent. The board knew of his impressive credentials and successful tenure at South. Our search couldn't have been easier, and for that, we thank him. Our faith in Dr. McDonald has been more than justified. He has overseen and encouraged major improvements in our curriculum, much more attention being paid to all students, many more programs for those who need extra resources to succeed, while at the same time creating more AP opportunities for all. Most recently, he oversaw our massive switch to the one-to-one program, computers for all students, and we see how complex that is. He has been consistently supportive of staff initiatives as well. He's maintained consistent, good relationship with the board. As members left and new members joined us, and that's always a little iffy when new people join us. My one regret is that while I was president, I often had to follow his concise, informative, and very humorous speeches, which you just saw tonight, to students or staff with my poor attempts. He is not an easy act to follow.
Thank you.
Let's see, I, I was recently asked how things are going at District 99, and I said, it has, it's never been better since I've been on the board. And that we have a board meeting coming up, and in fact, it's going to be Dr. McDonald's last meeting. And the person said to me, he's really been steady. And I, I couldn't think of a better way to sum up the importance of you to this community and this school district. You're a rock. I've been told that, that a school district is like a tanker ship or something, that large vehicle that moves really slowly. And to make changes, you know, it, it's something that has to be planned, and, and along the way, there are icebergs and things that get in the way, and it takes somebody who's very steady at the helm in the midst of all kinds of things going on, whether it's silly things between board members, or silly things in the community, or very serious issues with the state funding, whatever it is. It's been a very, it's, it's been a privilege to have known you and, and served with you, and so thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Right around the rack.
I've known you the least amount of time of those on the board, so my comments will be most brief. You know, I just, the way I would personify or characterize your, your leadership is integrity and high character. I think you lead through example and the quality of the person who you are. I think you lead through example and the quality of the person who you are. And I think the fact that this board is a healthy board is a true reflection of your leadership, as well as the administrative staff that we have here. I think we're lucky to have you, and we're all very sorry to see you go. And I really enjoyed your analogy as being a plow horse.
I think that's fantastic. Thank you, Dan.
Okay. Dr. McDonald, congratulations on your well-deserved and long-awaited retirement. Your work truly has made a lasting impact, and one that has changed District 99 for the better in so many ways. Working with you has been a pleasure. Your graciousness about the people with whom you work, your delight in and acknowledgement of their successes, and your ability to make them always the heroes has always impressed me. I have always appreciated your thoughtful and your very steady, like people said, approach to solving any problem, whether it be large or small. You have shown to us to be a leader that is patient, thoughtful, and wise. We have appreciated those qualities, as well as your loyalty to us both professionally and personally. To say you will be missed seems like such an understatement, but what can I or the rest of us say? You will definitely be missed. But may you retire knowing that you have made a remarkable contribution and have touched the lives of your students, staff, community members, and certainly, the Board of Education members, both present and past, who came tonight, in immeasurable ways. So, we thank you, and we wish you many blessings.
Thank you.
I'm next. I didn't... That was beautiful. So, everything she said, I would say, but I know you didn't want to, so I'm not going to say a lot. One is, I'm not letting you out of the bat.
Okay.
All right? But we can do it another time when it's unofficial, and then you don't have to call me Mr. Pavanato anymore, like my dad, all right? After tonight's just Rick, right?
I was concerned.
Is that okay? After tonight, it's just Rick, no more mister. That's my dad, all right? So, I'm the second newest guy, Don. So, I came on, and there was a little bit of a change, and I was really concerned. And I want to say that my concerns, I shouldn't have had any, because the last couple of years have been very good stewardship of this institution. You've done a great job, and I can say, I have full faith in everything that was done. And I'm glad my son is in the school district. I'm glad I live in Downers Grove. And I think what's nice about you, I've noticed, you don't need to be out in front. You're the one, everybody else is out in front, and you're the one behind. But you lead by example, and I think you would not assign anybody a job that you would not do yourself. And I think that just shows what a quality person you are. And so, it's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
Mark, I'm probably one of the ones that have known you the longest. I became PTA president, and you became principal at South High, right at the same time. So, we were kind of feeling our way around the whole building together. And so, I really appreciated that. And I think that one of the strong points that you showed the students and the staff and everyone is, is when you came, you wanted to meet the students. And I think probably by the time you retired as principal, you knew almost every student in that building by the first name. And I think that's remarkable, because what, there's two...
There's almost 3,000.
Students a year. And it's just incredible. And you're going to be greatly missed here at District 99, but you can't go without a little of something. As much as you try. As hard as you try. We got together with the board and the administrative staff, and we got you something to do in your spare time, a few doors, and the names are attached to them. Some have different meanings than others. And then, we got you a little memory book, and it's a little quote from almost everyone.
That's very nice.
And something to think about. Us, maybe not, but...
On Monday nights.
Mark, and we will miss you.
Thank you. Apollo, it's good stuff. Top notch.
As are you.
As are you.
Yep.
So, now, we will open it up for our second reception of visitors. If there's anybody who would like to address the board or Dr. McDonald about anything.
Hello. My name's Jake Giblin. I am the outgoing or former president of Downers Grove Education Association. I've got two things. First, I would like to introduce you to Valerie Hardy, who will be stepping in for me as the new board president, or not board president, sorry, I didn't mean to... As the new Downers Grove Education Association president, sorry. And she'll be working with you, and you are in better hands than you were with me. She's amazing. She's amazing. I don't speak for DGA anymore, but I'm going to speak for myself. And I know I've had conversations with you, Dr. McDonald. Everyone here has said some amazing things about you, and one of the things that I will take as I kind of move into my new journey into leadership roles myself, watching you is intimidating, because you do things for leadership and make them look easy, but I know they're not. Knowing someone's name is an amazing leadership skill, and you do it seemingly effortlessly. And that personalization is hard to replace. When you put your confidence in someone, you elevate them, because they know it comes from a good person, who is strong in what he does, and does it for the good of others. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
I assume that the protocol is still to identify myself.
You just need your name, though.
Alan Barnett, 2723 Jackson Drive, Woodridge, Illinois. Dr. McDonald, it was a distinct honor to have served on a board that hired you. Working with you has been a great pleasure, and I am proud to have witnessed the professionalism, dedication, and integrity that you brought to this office. I'm not nearly as eloquent as everyone else on this up here, but I can't thank you enough for all that you've given to this community and this institution. I wish you very well in your retirement. Hope you have a record bass. And you may not consider yourself a show horse, but from a plow horse, pretty good-looking to me.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board, including any staff members who may or may not live in the community? Okay. Well, hearing none, I'm going to ask if there's anything, anybody wants to speak on communications and announcements, otherwise, I will just table it for the next meeting.
I'm not going to be here at the next meeting, so I do have a couple of things. I'm actually, I'm going to take Mike's role now. I'm going to talk. All right. So, first up, we have not met since the Memorial Gardens ceremonies. And I was not able to make the Souths, because we were still in school, but I was able to make North's ceremony, because we were in finals, and I finished early. And I was able to just stand back and watch the whole presentation, and I think everybody involved with that, it was moving, it was, it was, you had to be there to see it. And I don't know if you watched on video, if it would be the same, but it was, it was something to see, and I think everybody involved in that project needs to be congratulated with that. Second, Gina needs a little bit of kudos. She's been running summer camps this summer. We start, she started last summer, or a couple summers ago, right Gina, two summers ago? And this summer, we just finished Kids Cool Chemistry Camp, and it was at North. It was fourth and fifth grade kids. And I was, I just volunteered, and I was in the background just helping clean beakers and everything, but it was a phenomenal camp. Then, there's a culinary camp that ran last week, and this week, now, they're running a STEM camp for just girls, science, technology, engineering, math. And my son's helping with that this week, and has started today. And I think these programs are very good programs, and I think the district needs to keep doing them, and it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of, I think Gina does a lot of wringing her hands, "Am I going to have enough students? Am I going to, do I have to turn somebody away?" And so, I think just a kudos with that. So, I definitely wanted to bring those two things out. And then, I won't be here next meeting, because I'm going to be gone. So, just wanted to let that, in case somebody wasn't here.
Thank you, Liz.
So, okay?
Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Gina.
Yeah. Gina, nice job.
Okay, I would just remind everybody that we have an upcoming board meeting. Our next meeting will be July 18th. That'll be the regular business meeting here at 7:30. Feel free to attend if you'd care to. I attempted to go to the parking lot. I think we will refrain. So, do we have a, do we have a motion to adjourn and go for cake?
One more thing.
Oh!
You have, and we need to mark it off.
Thank you, Miss.
I'm looking out for you.
Do.
Okay, now.
Are we making a motion to adjourn and have some cake?
I'll make a motion to adjourn and have some cake.
I'll make a second to motion to adjourn and have some cake.
Deb motions, Mike seconds. All those in favor of adjourned and having some cake?
Aye.
All those opposed? Dang it. Thank you.
Thanks.